City Council Meeting of Wednesday, December 7th at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
I'd ask that we remember all of those in our community that are less fortunate than we are, especially during this time when many of us are celebrating family and Thanksgiving and Christmas. This is ironically also the time when most people decide to commit suicide, honestly. And so, we want to just remember those who are less fortunate, those who are struggling in those areas. We also want to ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the right information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie. And finally, also remember those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers.
Mr. Kwiatowski.
And can we please remember our prayers today, the passing of Diane Letizio Hopkins, one of the first policewomen in Erie history, and also a member of the pension board. She passed away recently. She was not only a good friend of mine, but a hard worker. And almost till the day of her death, she was helping her fellow retirees. And let's also not forget the sacred nature of this day, December 7th, a day which has kind of got forgotten due to the lack of history being taught, like it used to be. But today represents a dark passage in our nation's history when we have such gentleman as a 104-year-old gentleman attending Pearl Harbor today to be with his friends who passed away and lost their innocence on that fateful day. Let us never forget that day in our nation's history.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we stand in, one nation, under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A couple of minutes from the meeting of Wednesday, November 16, 2016, and bills for payment on December 2nd and 9th, 2016. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky.
Any requests for repository sales? Any requests for repository sales? Any requests for repository sales? Seeing none, we'll continue on with the meeting. Citizens to be heard, the first citizen that signed up was Ronnie Fullerton. Is Ronnie here today?
No, she's-
She called in, that's right.
Called in, yeah.
Okay. Ronnie called in, she's unable to make it, so we will take citizens to be heard from the audience at this time. Good morning. Name and address for the record, please.
Jason Burndo, 4131 McClellan Avenue, Erie PA 16510, and happy holidays and season's greetings. On the agenda, there's a resolution for the West 8th Corridor Improvement Project of $3 million. I'm asking questions about that, and I really would like to ask, why are we doing that? And why are we drawing up a resolution when we are trying to revitalize our own downtown? If the West 8th Street Corridor Improvement Project deals solely with Mill Creek Township, shouldn't Mill Creek Township do their due diligence and worry about their own township when we're trying to revitalize our own downtown? We have the Downtown Partnership Master Plan, and I think that that money should go to implementing what refocused Erie did and the Downtown Partnership Master Plan. And all these master plans are trying to bring businesses to downtown Erie and take care of the city of Erie. I just have a question about that because it's sort of taking the focus from what we're trying to do for our hometown and our downtown off the grid. And it's saying to, you know, that yes, we're going to take care of the city of Erie and the whole region, but I think that $3 million could be put towards revitalizing our parks in the city, revitalizing infrastructure, and being put towards what we need to do to pay the bills. So, just like to ask that question, that's all. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning. Richard Wagner, 42nd and State. It's that time of the year again, Merry Christmas at 6th and State, and now City Council will be evaluating the spending plan of the mayor. This attempt to pacify the taxpayers is really useless. City Hall provides services, and all the departments in the city are represented by a union that represents the service workers. Since we don't make anything here and we provide a service, and each department operating in City Hall, the biggest expense is salaries, all governed by those pesky union contracts. I don't know how many paper clips or reams of paper it would take to impact this budget, but that probably is the only place you can try to save any money. It really is a waste of time by everyone involved. I want to take time to thank Mr. Carley for attacking the tax rearrangement of two publicly-funded hotels on the bayfront operated by Casey Wells Group. It's ridiculous to think that they don't compete with the private sector and hurt the bottom line of all the hotels that do pay property taxes. Another thing, during the reporting of Mr. Carley's efforts, I couldn't help but note that the bonded debt associated with the two hotels approaches $100 million, and the assessed value of the two properties is around $50 million. Why is there such a discrepancy? Several months ago, I appeared before you about a concern I had of a $500,000 investment with the Junior's Last Laugh property. I asked the simple question, to replace 47 windows, repoint some of the brick, and pressure wash the top two floors, isn't $500,000 a lot of money for such an undertaking? The project was undertaken by the Redevelopment Authority, using grant money from the state to replace 47 windows at $10,000 apiece. There probably should be a forensic audit of these activities. I often hear you discuss due diligence from the dais. None of you do that. If you did, the hotel would be paying taxes, and we wouldn't have spent all that money on windows, only to sell the top two floors of the recently renovated Junior's Last Laugh Building for $25,000. It's ridiculous, and I can't understand how this can happen, other than the fact that the mess we see in the Union Square Project was started by Mr. Elliott, it was followed by Mr. Bostel, then followed by Ms. Green, and ending up in the lap of Mr. Henry. None of these people had the skills to compete with, in this huge project, complete this huge project. Another common denominator with these people I mentioned was Mr. Bong, a successful food service salesman who served on the Board of the Erie Redevelopment Authority. He also is complicit with what has happened to the Union Square Project. Oh, did I mention, Mr. Bong now heads up the Department of Economic Development for the mayor? And this is the same department that wants to move full steam ahead with the land bank and somehow fit that in with Mr. Booke's comprehensive plan. We'll see how all that works out. We, as a city, are on the verge of collapse. We're losing population, and the population we are not losing all seem to fall in the poverty sector of our community. The average income continues to decline, and frankly, I think we are becoming the laughingstock of the state of Pennsylvania. As I look at the enormous task facing you, I have to think what motivates each and every one of you. And what really causes me to take pause is that the President of Council is trying to wear multiple hats. You cannot be the President of the EEA, the eighth-largest employer in the city, and then come down to City Hall, which happens to be the 14th-largest employer in the city, and pretend to represent 100,000 citizens in their best interest. Either you are a strong advocate for the public service sector unions, and I believe you are, what we need is a strong advocate for the needs of the taxpayer and the citizens of this great city. You just cannot do both. It's not fair to you, and it's not fair to both groups you are trying to serve. Thank you.
Just a reminder-
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you. Just a reminder, we don't address individual council people. From the podium, we address the body of council. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And there's one thing I have to say.
Your time is up, but thank you.
As President, you have decided to meet with the school district, and-
Your time is up. Thank you. We can meet offline.
I didn't hear the buzzer go off.
I'll gladly talk to you. Rose, is his time up?
Yeah, his time's up.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
I'll gladly meet with you offline, Mr. Wagner.
Oh, thanks.
Okay. You don't want to work.
I'm not scripted. I'm in lib. I'm a senior citizen from the 3rd Ward. I'm not giving my address. I've given it before. I'm afraid of retaliation with the cameras and public TV, but I am a taxpayer, bills paid in advance.
Can you at least put it on the paper for us so that we have it?
I did that.
Okay, thank you.
I want to first thank the Streets Department, Ed. Four weeks in a row, my little plastic bag of banana peels in a big 30, 40, 50-gallon garbage can was not picked up. Four weeks. So, I did, after the second and third week, I talked to Parks, Jamie, I talked to Bruce, I talked to many, many, but Ed did, last night at 5:00, send a Streets Department vehicle to pick up my, which now has grown to a couple of bags, a couple of containers of leaves, some tree branches that I trimmed so that ice wouldn't fall on people. Anyway, thanks, Ed. I did talk, called to the mayor's office, I called Streets, I called Parks, I called, well, whatever. The employees need to be fired if they can't pick up the darn bags of, little bags of refuse. They picked up some of my recycle, but they just dumped over the barrel and it sat there for four weeks. That's that. Secondly, I'm in the 3rd Ward, we are a ghetto. I would like, instead of high salaries to inefficient workers, I would like to see foot patrol and bicycle patrol on the streets of the 3rd Ward, specifically my area. We've had shootings, we've had car windows busted out, we've had magnanimous drug busts right in, five houses in my neighborhood have been known as drug houses. The police do a wonderful job. They bust the people, they send them to the stupid magistrates. Dom DiPaolo, I give him 100% credit. He gave $100,000 bond, and they send it to the gentleman, Mr. Carney, who reduces it to $25,000. The drug dealers are out in the street dealing again. Let's get some foot patrol, bicycle patrol, the Petro, let the fat cops lose some weight, get on the street. I want to thank the council. I haven't been here in a while because it's not worth my time, actually. The mayor has never been to council meeting whenever I've been here, but it would be nice to see our $100,000 mayor here sitting sometimes. Gentlemen, public, thank you for your time, and I'll use only two or three minutes. I can't supersede the gentleman that went before me, but thank you for your time and happy holidays.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard?
Hi, my name's Wally Brown, 425 West 18th Street. This is for the Sisters of St. Joseph there in Little Italy. We're really here for is, we have a garage that's been, went to zoning, and they didn't give them the variance of zoning. It's been over five years, and they're still in business. Well, this garage has caught on fire five years ago, I believe, or maybe a little bit longer. Well, it caught on fire again last night. This guy put a homemade wood burning stove in there. We reported it to the city, fire department and everything. But when he burns, wherever he's burning in there, these people, I got a picture here, I'm going to leave it with you, and they can't breathe in their place. And we have one person that's legally blind that lives right in the smoke line. He calls the fire department, and they're not coming out every time anymore. So, we need to have something done. And the address is 352 West 18th Street. It's in the alleyway between 18th and 17th. There's a lot of apartments in this, around there, and I, you know, I just don't want to see something happen like that in California. You know, last night at 11:30, the fire department was out there. So, I'm going to leave this picture with you, you know, if you just could, I don't know what else we can do. You know, he keeps appealing it and says he's in business. You know, I'm sure that there's got to be another route we can take. You know, I mean, besides calling the fire department and calling City Hall every, you know, I'm sure everybody's tired of hearing from us. And you know, I want to talk on that landlord thing. I'm all for it, but I wish it was three years. You can even, you know, I just think two years, every two years, it's been going on now, you know, so everybody's been through it at least a couple of times, so three years would be, I don't care if you keep the fees the same, but if you could stretch out the length, that would be nice, just a little. Bye. Okay, I'll leave this picture out.
Thank you all.
Okay? And have a happy holiday, everybody. Merry Christmas, we're allowed to say that now.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard?
I ain't no joke there.
No one's listening, you're-
No, that's right.
Nobody thinks that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Eric.
I see we got our lawyer back over there. I want to say to the lawyer, that wasn't a very nice thing you did to Joe Collette. He wasn't going to do nothing with that paper when he gave it to you anyway. But everybody deserves respect. If you want to be respected, you got to respect somebody. I don't care what you think, what your opinion is of them, if they respect you, you respect them. You're nothing special, nobody's nothing special. We all going to leave here one day, I promise you that, because I done seen a lot of them leave. I'm leaving here. I want to talk to you about that bond grant years ago. That bond grant was for helping poor people keep their property up, and the kids, they had summer jobs. Y'all have been taking that money for a long time. I didn't know that, because I'd been talking about it. Y'all better be glad I didn't know it, because I'm not afraid to talk to you. You ought to listen to this old man, because one day, you're going to think about what I say. I'm not right all the time, but I try to be. I try to do my homework, so I run my mouth. And when I run my mouth, I stand behind what I say, because I'm not afraid of nothing or nobody. I can't die but one time, and I'm not afraid to die. I've never died before, and I ain't heard nobody dying and coming back, but Jesus. And I keep Him in my prayers. I pray for y'all too, because y'all need some prayer. Y'all need some prayer. Y'all need to be prayed for. I just don't know, and I tell you, I tell you all the time, I don't know. And when I tell you I don't know, I don't know. But y'all supposed to know everything. You would think you do, because you're not listening to nobody. The gentleman back there, when he come up here, he's giving you facts, and you don't even pay no attention to him. He's well-educated, I don't have that much, but I ain't no dummy. I'm no dummy. You can't hit me upside my head and tell me you just patting me on my back, because I know better than that. I know better than that. Y'all took our time a while back. The next mayor, I want our time back. I know I'm the only one talking about that, but we don't need but the five minutes. Give us the five minutes after y'all get done to rebuttal y'all. But you don't want that. You don't want that. You're not very honest. You stole our time. You're a thief. And it wasn't done in the night, it was done in this lit-up room. You know, I'm surprised that we don't have this place full. It's a shame. Peoples don't care about, they don't care about their kids, so naturally, they don't care about whatever go wrong. Everything Joe say is gospel. Joe got a lot to answer about. Believe me, the Bible said we're supposed to lift our leaders up. How can you lift somebody up kicking you in your butt? Uh-uh. Pick me in mind, I'm going to cut that foot off. Don't do that. Them cops beating that boy up, have y'all paid off? Have you paid off? Because I ain't heard nothing. That boy was mistreated. The police, they're supposed to arrest you and take you to jail. He's supposed to beat you up. I hope Don Nelson never beat me up, because I want you to kill me. Kill me, because Armageddon is coming. Leave me when I tell you. I'm trying to tell y'all something. I know you don't think I know what I'm talking about, but one of these days, you're going to think back, you're going to say, that old man knew what he was talking about. You don't misuse people. Treat people the way you want to be treated. Them foreigners coming in here, I don't have nothing against them, I don't blame them, because where they come from, they didn't have nothing. Why not come and get something free? We don't even take care of our soldiers when we come, we kick them in the butt. They'd come back with a arm missing, a leg missing, we don't do nothing for them.
Thank you for your time.
Y'all better listen to me. Listen if you want to.
Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard?
Hello, my name is Antonio Carr. I live on East, I'm sorry, West 8th Street, Apartment 1W, and I'm new to this whole thing. I've never been to a council meeting. I'm trying to get involved with Erie. I'm the youngest person in this room. But I grew up in Erie, and I used to complain about how it used to be a boring place. I didn't appreciate that boringness until I got older, until I moved out, I'm working, and I'm getting married soon. I have all these things to look forward to, supposedly, but I can see that Erie's falling apart, and that terrifies me. Girls are under threat, and the economy's not doing good, that makes me ask, what does my future hold for me and my soon-wife-to-be? I admit, I'm not aware of all the issues, but I'm trying to get aware, and I know one of the issues we have is the bridge on 12th Street. There's a lot of people, the one that we closed from cars, there's a lot of people who want to keep that open. They find it very useful to get to work, to get some groceries, just to see people and connect with other people in Erie, and I think that's a very important aspect of any town or city, is the community. We take away that bridge, you're just taking away from that community. So, I just want to ask you guys to please leave that open and repurpose it. It doesn't need to be for cars, but that has so much potential. We can open a business on it, we can make it a new tourist attraction, we can do so much with it, and it will be cheaper than tearing it down. That's all.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we'll continue on with the meeting.
Ordinances for first reading, Council File Number 15972, an ordinance amending Article 330 Landlord and Rental by amending Section 330.12 Sunset Provision to extend the ordinance expiration to March 31st, 2021. By Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mrs. Arrington, the Council File, Ordinance Number 15972, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones-
Mr. President.
Jones.
Just a quick question. So, if this passes, we allow this extension to be in place before 2021? If there are changes that need to be made, we can go in and adjust, just like any other-
Right. From what I understand, it's up at the end of this coming March-
Correct.
And then they're going to rebid, but there's, we can't rebid it unless we extend it, the ordinance, to match the bidding time, so.
Right. The reason I just bring that up, just in, excuse me, very quickly, is just because there are still, as someone mentioned, well, it's been two years, and everyone's already been. Well, we're finding new rentals are springing up every year, every day, and there are also, believe it or not, some that have been smooth enough to have avoided this process over the last several years. Not a compliment. And so, just wanted to make sure that people understand that this doesn't mean we're just not going to look at it again, it just doesn't, you know, change or can't be enhanced, but just the extension means that we, this is a part of the process for the rebidding and part of the process of making sure that we have the right and the most effective team put together for this ordinance.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I think people need to understand too, the original intent of this, and a few people were on when we did the original ordinance, was that there were a few house fires in a row where people died, and there was, the landlords did not have any smoke detectors in the house. So, we put the rental inspection program in to save lives. It was to make sure that those basic public safety needs were in those homes so that we did not have another tragedy on our hands unnecessarily. And so, it's a good program, and this extension will allow us to then bid it out for another cycle.
And in addition to that, not just the, because I was one of the spearheading people for this ordinance and took a lot of beat-ups over this, but not only were there not smoke detectors, but there were, the reason this became a larger issue is because there were not sufficient egress or exits. So, people were stuck in stairwells and didn't survive the fire. And so, that's why, it was more than just, hey, let's get some safety, security, information and education out, just to get smoke detectors. It was really about old building structures that didn't have sufficient exits, didn't have sufficient safety window sizes and those types of things. And so, there are some people who need to put in smoke detectors, but there are some people who needed to build exits, quite literally, out of the house or out of the apartment, because you had to come in and out the same door. And if that fire is in front of that door, you're, it's not a good situation. So, I did not, again, to belabor it, but it was, you know, there's some people who still, 10 years later, say this is ridiculous, but it was to save lives and to make people more safe in our community, and I'll stand by that until.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Winarski.
Thank you. I just want people to understand too, is with this ordinance that we are continuing, it is to, people got to realize, we appreciate the people that are investing in the city of Erie who are, have these rental properties, but it's also for the safety of the citizens who are doing the, who are the occupants of these facilities, and it also helps with the out-of-town landlords, which we, face it, we have them, and they may not have as much of a, it's more of a business for them than it is a concern for the citizens of Erie. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is just, it's good for the community to have this type of ordinance in place. Two years is, I know somebody had mentioned, could it be a three-year thing? I think with how some of these properties are changing from regular households to rental properties, whether it be a, just a single-family rental, or they turn into a duplex or what have you, but it's still for the good of the citizens, the safety of the neighborhood, not only the ones that are living in the properties, but their neighbors also. So, it's still a good ordinance to keep in place, and just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you. This does not apply to homeowners. However, my concern is there are homeowners who are renting to college students, and we have a large number of those. And it's important that we, when I say "we," I'm basically saying to administration to have the departments follow up on that, and if the college students are renting a home that has a- that has a basement that does not have an egress, then we need to move expeditiously on that as well. And I know there's several homes on my block that rent to college students that have basements, but does not have two ways out. Thank you.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing, and I don't want to, you know, set the agenda for the incoming president, but perhaps because it's the will of council, maybe we have in January a study session on the rental program as it's going up for bid, so that we can let the administration know our concerns as they bid that, that out. Is everyone in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Rose will take the vote.
Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City Council, read and adopt. Council File Ordinance Number 15972 by a 7A0 on first reading. Council File Number 15973, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Erie Part 1 Administrative Code Title 7 Employment Provisions Pensions Article 145 Officers and Employees Retirement System by amending Sections 145.13D2, 145.13I2, 145.13B2F1, 145.13B17, and 145.07G to comply with the IRS Plan Qualification Requirements to obtain a Plan Qualification Determination Letter. By Mr. Kowalski and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the Council File Number 15973, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mrs. Kowalski, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City Council, read and adopt. Council File Ordinance Number 15973 by a 7A0 on first reading. Council File 15974, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Erie Part 1 Administrative Code Title 7 Employment Provisions Pensions Article 147. Police Employees Pension Plan by amending Sections 147.08I2, 147.08B2F1, and 147.08B17 to comply with the IRS Plan Qualification Requirements to obtain a Plan Qualification Determination Letter. By Mr. Kowalski, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the Council File Ordinance Number 15974, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. Council, City Council, read and adopt. Council File Ordinance Number 15974 by a 7A0 on first reading. Council File 15975, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Erie Part 1 Administrative Code Title 7 Employment Provisions Pensions Article 149. Firefighters Pension Fund by amending Sections 149.07I2, 149.07B2F1, and 149.07B17 to comply with the IRS Plan Qualification Requirements to obtain a Plan Qualification Determination Letter. By Mr. Kowalski, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the Council File Ordinance Number 15975 has been read, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City Council, read and adopt. Council File Ordinance Number 15975 by a 7A0 on first reading. That'll take us into new business.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
So move. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Witherspoon. Any separations?
No separations?
Seeing none?
Okay, moving the balance of the agenda. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Committee reports, Mrs. Arrington.
No reports, Mr. President, but, you know, I would like to talk about the continuing violence that's going on in the Erie community. Mill Creek is all around us. The incident that happened at the Granada Apartments, you know, it really sad me. And this time of year, especially around the holiday time, is always a bad time for me and my family, 'cause we still grieving the loss of my own son. And the hardest thing about it is, we losing a lot of people just passing away from old age, maybe being sick and ill, but to lose people over senseless violence is, is sad. It's really sad. And whatever we can do as a council, as a community, we need to do it. We, we have to unify. You know, it's not just going on in the inner city. This is all around us, is, is all around the world, you know, but at some point, we have to unify and all come together and say, enough is enough. You know, it really is. And, and I just wanted to say that, and I hope everybody had a amazing Thanksgiving, and I hope everybody have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members who did not have a report, I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan.
Way too long. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple things I just wanted to mention. We had a study session with the Neighborhood Resource Center last week. They, you know, keep us very informed of their activities and what they're doing. Given overview again of their organization so everyone kind of understood what they do. Talk about the highlights of this past year, the crime spot, spot mapping, cameras, workshops, tentacle assistance, what they can do for other organizations to help them out, to either start a group or help out the group with what they're doing. And they also continue to develop their map of the neighborhood groups, which is good to see, there's been a couple new groups that have been added to the map. So that's always good news if more areas of our city have been represented by, you know, people who really care about their neighborhoods. And also, he talked about the alignment of some of the things they're doing with, with the comp plan. So that's all, all good, good discussion. I just wanted to also report that the, the urban farming initiative that we've discussed in the past, the planning commission continues to review. They talked originally about a, discussing a possible overlay district, but now they're leaning towards amendments. So I continue to keep, keep in touch with them to, to get, get their input into, you know, hopefully we'll, after, in a new year, we'll get this, get this moving to, to get the amendments changed and, and move forward on this. And the last thing I wanted to mention is the, for the Erie Comp Plan, as requested when the council passed it, this past year, passed the Comp Plan, the, an action plan was requested to, to, to help move this forward. Three action teams have been created, one for downtown, one for neighborhoods, and one for the waterfront. Priorities are being looked at for, for future input, for public, future input to the public. Funding mechanisms are being discussed, collaboration is being discussed, what groups need to be included, and then future public meetings will be planned to get further public input and to continue to educate people to, you know, get out in neighborhoods and see what, what we should be moving forward on and what we shouldn't be. So we'll continue to keep everybody informed on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kowalski.
In support of Mr. Witherspoon, my fellow councilman and former classmate, no report.
Thank you. I just have a few things I wanted to address. There was a citizen to be heard that questioned the $3 million multimodal transportation fund grant. We're applying for a grant for the West A Street corridor. If you ever drive out by Harding School, on the one side of the street, there is no sidewalk. The, but businesses have just paved over it and made it part of their parking, like to pull into their parking lots. And so what we're trying to do is, what we are doing, it's not we're trying, we're applying for a grant through the PennDOT, and it will allow us to build a multimodal corridor, meaning sidewalks, bike path, and, and fix the street. So while in the comprehensive plan, it does say that we need to address the issues with downtown, it also says we can't ignore our neighborhoods and for the safety of the kids, and we've also had complaints from neighbors in that neighborhood about that sidewalk and the fact that when they plow it, there's no delineation between the sidewalk's edge and the street, and it's not safe to walk over there. We're applying for this grant. The other thing that's in here too is we did support, to support VelocityNet, the Enterprise Zone Review Committee has recommended that we be formally ratify, rather, their grant, or rather, loan for $1 million, and that's in support of the project to transform a part of downtown over there where they're rebuilding, or renovating the Rothrock Building and purchasing that area and bringing in 100 new jobs to the city. We're in support of that, and we continue to help them in that, that effort to bring good paying jobs. Lowest paying job on that project, once they're in, is $30,000. These are family sustaining jobs. It's a good shot in the arm for the city, and we support that. And they have a good track record of paying back all their loans. They have great credit, so we have, we're very confident in that loan. And with that, we'll turn to Mr. Kevich.
I have no report.
Thank you. Administration?
Good morning, Mr. President. In keeping in line with everyone else, I have no report, as I generally use my cellphone for my calendar, and I can't get it to turn on at the moment, so I have no report. Thank you.
Just to remind the public, we will be having budget sessions Tuesdays and Thursdays. We will have one immediately after this meeting, after a short recess. Tuesdays and Thursdays, we will have budget sessions, though, at 5:30 here in council chambers. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.
City Council adjourns at 9:50. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.